Good evening Wakefield, and welcome to the Town Council meeting for September 23rd, 2019. This meeting will actually be in two parts. We'll have an executive session followed by our regular open meeting. I will at this time entertain a motion to have the council go into closed executive session with roll call.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Dinaco. So this will require a roll call vote. So I'll go Counselor.
Mr. Chairman, if you want to state the purpose.
I'm sorry, yes. And the purpose for us going into executive session at 6:30 is in order to discuss litigation that may have detrimental effects to the town if it was to be discussed in public, in a public forum at this time. So with that...
And with the intent to come back into open session.
And we intend to come back into open session precisely at 7:00 PM, at which point the regular meeting will begin as normal. Okay, so with that Counselor.
Yes.
Smith-Galvin.
Yes.
Counselor Dinaco.
Aye.
Counselor Butt.
Yes.
By Chair Santos and Chair Donbrowski. So we have 6-0. We'll go now into executive session. We'll return at precisely 7:00 PM for the open meeting.
Good evening again Wakefield and welcome back to the September 23, 2019 Town Council Meeting. We are out of executive session and now we're going to open session. So we'll begin open session and I'll call this meeting to order at about 7:09. And we'll begin this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance. Before we stand, I did want to introduce two very special guests that we have this evening leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. They are Wakefield's own Natalie Jolly and Kyle McGrail. And Natalie is a singer-songwriter. She's a vocalist. She also plays rhythm guitar as well. Kyle is a drummer and they are in the band Natalie Jolly and The Reckless Hearts. What's significant about this group, aside from making great music, is that they're actually the 2019 Song of the Year Award winners from the New England Music Awards for their song "You Oughta Know." Natalie and Kyle have been together collaborating for about eight years. They're Wakefield Memorial High School grads and we're incredibly honored to have them here out of their busy schedules to be able to be here tonight. I will say that Natalie's a bit under the weather with her voice. She used it a lot this weekend performing, but she says it's strong enough to be able to provide the assistance with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if both of you would please lead us in the pledge.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both so much for coming.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And when they become Grammy Award winners, we're going to say we knew them back then, back in the day. Absolutely, indeed, we've got an end. Item number three on the agenda is attendance for this evening. So I see that all town councils, with the exception of Councilor May who is unavailable due to travel, are here. So we have six councils this evening, as well as Madam Clerk, Town Council E.L., and Town Administrator, Mr. Mayo. Item number four was executive session that we had at 6:30. That concluded just after seven o'clock and so that item has been taken care of. Item number five is approval of the minutes from our September 9, 2019 meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
Is that moved?
Seconded.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Councilor Chines. Any discussion? Seeing none, the motion before you is the approval of the September 9, 2019 minutes. All those in favor?
One abstention.
So I see five, all those opposed, and one abstention. So one abstention, Councilor Dinaco, otherwise passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number six is public engagement. This is the opportunity for members of the community to come before the Town Council and address any issues or concerns that they may have. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed in for this evening?
Yes Chairman, we have Eric Reed.
All right, Mr. Reed, if you could please take your seat at the table. If you could just identify yourself and provide your street address.
My name is Eric Reed. I reside at 26 Crescent Street.
All right, Mr. Reed, we allocate approximately three minutes for each person presenting with, in my discretion, additional time afforded to you.
Yes, I have three topics and two handouts.
Yes.
At the discussions of the annual town report and the list back in 2011, the Town Administrator talked about doing this electronically. And I am here to suggest that we could do that in the future partially as an experiment. The Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40, Section 49, call for printing the annual town report for use of the inhabitants containing the report to selectmen, school committee, town accountant, town treasurer, and other offices and board and other matters as the town or bylaw may require. That legislation was modified in 2015 to substitute, make available for the word print, which could mean electronics. And so our town reports have a 51, Section 1 for a deadline, 2 publication and available 14 days before the first session of annual town meeting. 51-3 is purpose of contents of the annual town report. That was added in 2011. I got the date wrong. Tom Mullen helped me compose that. And this letter suggests a new section, electronic distribution. Most of our contributions to the annual report are submitted by word process, thus there's no retyping expense unlike previous decades. I've attended town meetings for 60 years, so the expense to retyping the submittal is minimal. Only the headers and footers need be added for the printed version. This material named below is that necessary for the voters at annual town meeting. This material and all the rest would appear in the usual print format at a convenient time, but not under the time constraints named above. So there would be a proposed wording there. The Town Council before the annual town meeting shall distribute by electronic means the following portions of the annual town report. And I mentioned the ones before, selectmen, school committee, town accountant, treasurer, and add the report of the Town Administrator, because that's interesting. And this letter suggests that before submittal of the new section to the voters by means of a bylaw, that this action be tried at least once. See if, so we could do that next spring. Return the page to the second handout. After the cable license was granted in 1981, I wrote 17 reports of the Cable Committee detailing the various arguments we had with the cable company and the agreements signed and the number subscribers and all like this. After the year 2000, the report in 2007 is the only one that's appeared. I think that should appear every year and I'm making that point. And I think that will be helpful for past reference. And I would hope that the Cable Advisory Committee is active because the funding for WCIT is built on sand rather than rock. The cable companies would like not to pay as much for access fees, which will mean a big disaster here. In June of 18, the Chair of the, sorry, the Charter Review Committee and Town Council appeared before this party and said that there were parts of the charter which are not so good. So the question is, how do we change it? Now, the status of the DPW was mentioned because it's specified in the charter at great length and not very much in the bylaws, which what the changing the charter is necessarily cumbersome. So the question is, how does the charter get modified between the review, between every decade and the charter? We had an experience in 2017 when we chose to rename the selectmen as town councillors and we did this by a process, first the town meeting vote, then you had a mailing to the voters, and then you had a vote at town election to do that. An enthusiast may have at least one idea of charter change and submit same in an article or articles to town meeting. Oops, what about the expense to the voters? So what do you do? Do you not change the charter at all between the next charter review committee and the decade, or do you have other things involved? On the Massachusetts State House, proposed legislation sometimes has an emergency preamble attached so that action which needs that law can take place immediately. So for possible amendments to the charter, perhaps a delay preamble is possible. I think my point is that, how do you do this between the eight to 10 years before the next charter review? Perhaps you should specify one or two dates, years, in which you consider changes to the charter and you collect charter amendments up till that time. I don't know if that can be done at all. But the question is, what is the policy of the Town Council, plural, considering amendments to the charter? That question might be asked at November town meeting. Thank you for the.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Reed. Anybody have any comments or questions? We're at just about six minutes, so I wanted to give Mr. Reed the time certainly. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Reed, thank you for taking the time and putting this together. We truly appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your amendments at the previous town meeting.
Indeed, thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone else who has signed up for public engagement?
No, we do not.
All right. So we'll move next on to item number seven. That is library trustees appointment. We have trustees from the BB Memorial Library here this evening and if you could step up, as well as Catherine McDonald, the Director of the Library.
Yes.
Do you need us all there?
Yes.
Yes. If everyone could come up around the table, certainly. So just to explain to viewers at home, we have two open positions now, trustee positions for the library for terms, I believe both of which run through April of 2020. And so it is the joint responsibility of the library trustees and the Town Council to appoint interim trustees who will serve out the remainder of those terms. And so that's why we're joined here this evening. Town Council has been provided with resumes and cover letters for each of the applicants. I believe library trustees have also reviewed those as well. And so now we'll have discussion and dialogue relative to potential candidates. So at that, I'll turn it over to the trustees.
All right, sounds good. Thank you very much. Good evening, members of the Council, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for having us this evening at this joint session. My name is Kevin Scanlon. I am the Chair of the Board of Library Trustees. With me to my right is Catherine McDonald, the Library Director, and Susan Wetmore, trustee, Lori.
Amy.
Amy, sorry. Amy Lomack, Chris Barrett, Jeff Quinn, Cindy Schatz, and Tim Haley says he's on his way, but he's not here yet. So at some point, he'll be here. So we had our annual, not annual, our monthly meeting, thank you, our monthly meeting is September 18. And we received, as well as I think the Council did, eight resumes. And I think we're actually very pleased with the turnout of the candidates for two spots on the board. And quite surprised and pleasantly pleased with the range of skill sets and backgrounds that they brought to the board. We had a fairly robust discussion on all the candidates and we took a vote and have a recommendation for two candidates and they are Lori Goodwin, or Laura Goodwin and Adam Rogers. And so with that, I leave it up to. And so with that, I leave it up to the Chair to see how we proceed next.
Thank you. Now, could you help us and the folks watching at home understand a little bit more of the process on the library? And what was that process? What does that look like?
In terms of the selection?
Right.
So we went through all the resumes. We looked at the various skills that they brought to the board, whether it be business, involvement in the town, what types of areas that we thought that the library as trustees would look for towards in the future, i.e., you know, some of us had backgrounds in the legal field, some of us had backgrounds in the IT field, some of us backgrounds in facilities and those kinds of things. And what type of demographic we were kind of looking for too, older, younger, trustees who have kids in the system, people who don't have any kids. So it was really quite varied. But, you know, I think that what we looked at too was involvement also in the town, to make sure that people who are there are going to be committed to the job. It's vitally important that not only do you serve, as you all know, as volunteers and people vote, but it's critical that you participate and that you're available to not only do the work, the hard work for trustees, but also, you know, as you all know, subcommittees. That's where the real work gets done, the subcommittees. And so we also recognize that it's a tremendous commitment. And we looked at to see, like I said, what types of involvement and what type of commitment these individuals had in other aspects either of the town or outside of their work.
All right, so I guess at this point I'll open up to town councilors. As I had mentioned early on, we also received those resumes. We all reviewed them. Does anyone have any comment, any questions, any thoughts relative to the applicants?
So I know some of you know, when Stacy Constance was someone that I was supporting one hundred percent for position, I feel uncomfortable letting you know that, because I don't want to use my position as town council, a member of the town council, to walk into your domain. But Stacy is someone who we've known, I've known her for thirty years. We were best friends in law school. She has, since she moved to town, has volunteered in this town, an unbelievable member of the Charter Commission. She has children in the school system. Very intelligent, her ability to negotiate and bring people together in a compromise was wonderful. So she, the resumes were outstanding. The resumes were very, they were better than what we get for a lot of other. But I wanted to be very upfront, that I reached out to all my board about a month and a half ago, asking for Stacy's support. And I know that wasn't relayed to you, which it shouldn't have been. I probably should have reached out, but I was uncomfortable with that. I know, you know, we have different positions with different boards, but, so I just wanted to put that on the table, that she was my candidate.
Sure, and I appreciate that. Again, I think it was a good problem to have in the sense that they were all very good candidates, and it was not an easy decision. I will say that, as the Chairman pointed out, these are positions that are here till April, then everyone has to run for election again in April. But again, I think, you know, from our perspective, it's a good problem to have when you have such high-quality people to pick from. And again, I think that they're all strong candidates, but, you know, like I said, we looked at all the resumes, and those are the two individuals that we thought would best fit, you know, the way we currently operate.
Councilor Chimes?
Well, first off, I want to, you know, echo Mr. Scanlon, your comments about the quality of the resumes that we received. It was, you know, from my perspective, in, you know, reviewing the resumes, I mean, it was tough to sort of make a decision on sort of which two would you like to see involved in the library, because very honestly, I'd love to see them all involved in the library and saw that track record in many of the resumes. And, you know, for the folks that did apply, who maybe don't get selected tonight, if they are watching, I'd encourage you to continue applying for positions in town. You know, this is a group of people, again, the caliber of experience that they brought to this certainly would serve us well in other boards and committees. So I hope we'll see some of these resumes again. I'm supportive of the recommendation that the Board of Library Trustees came up with. I think the involvement with the library of the two candidates you've selected speaks in their favor. The experience that they bring, Mr. Rogers with his involvement with the Boys and Girls Club and with sort of youth activities in town, I think that's obviously a really critical demographic for the library, and so I'm supportive of him joining the board. And for Ms. Goodwin, I think the experience in marketing, communications, for everything that we do in town government, and the library is no exception, is certainly a valuable skill set. Obviously, the experience in publishing as well is valuable. So I applaud you for the work that you've done to review the resumes, and I'm supportive of the recommendations.
I guess just one thing to make sure we focused a bit on is, it's a bit different process for the trustees and for the town council, in that we all have a vote, but you were able to meet and discuss, and we don't do that in the same way. And so we're hearing your recommendations. The insights you can provide specific to the two candidates that you're recommending, I think would be especially helpful for us. We don't have two candidates that we've identified as a body that we are looking to move forward. Obviously, we all have an equal vote. So to the extent you can talk about that process, how you narrowed it down to these two, what the vote composition looked like, those sorts of insights, I think, would be helpful for us as a body to understand, because there might be members that have certain candidates in mind potentially. And I'd like to make sure that we understand your thinking, so that, you know, we can also apply our own thoughts to it.
Sure. So Mr. Rogers, as was just mentioned, is deeply involved in the community as the Director of the Boys and Girls Club of Stoneman and Wakefield. And I think that his involvement in that and being able to talk to different stakeholders and being able to engage in various fundraising efforts, and I think was important in terms of reaching out to types of the demographic that we're reaching, in terms of the library, youth, middle school, high school, always challenging to try to get them to read more. But I think that he brings a good dynamic to the board. He's a little bit on the younger side, younger than certainly myself and some of the other trustees, so I think that also helps. He also participated in the strategic plan on behalf of the library. So I think that overall, his skill set is something that would be important and beneficial to the library. Ms. Goodwin? Ms. Goodwin, if I remember, as was stated, is employed by, I think, Harvard Business School in the Marketing Department. And again, someone who participated in the strategic plan for the library is someone who's involved in outside activities as well, which I thought would be, we thought would be helpful to the library in terms of her ability to, oh, thank you. Assist the library in, in this digital age, marketing is critically important and getting the word out to the town and communities in a different way than we're used to, vis-à-vis Facebook, Instagram, Snapchat, whatever it may be, I think is important. And, you know, the library world is changing. It's not a place now where you go and simply check out books. It's a public space. It's really a place where people come, congregate, and meet, not only to talk about books, but current events, but whatever it may be. And so, you know, in order to stay in, to be relevant, I think, currently and in the future, it's important to have that type of marketing, as you would say, or awareness to publicize to the community how important the library is in this day and age. It's not someplace that you can just, you know, come online and Google and internet. You know, our statistics show people, the traffic is very heavy in the library still. If you go there on a Saturday or a Sunday or after school, the place is packed. And so I think it's important that, again, we try to look at being able to reach different segments of our community, not only from the very young, but also to the very old, not only people who have people in the school system, but people who don't have people in the school system. And so I think it's important that we reach out to all types of folks and be relevant. Again, you know, what are things libraries can do? Other things, resume building, right? How to use LinkedIn. Those are not things traditionally libraries do, but I think those are things that we can help bring to the community. And a person with this type of background can, I think, get us there to be able to stay relevant in a digital age. In terms of the process, we, again, reviewed all the resumes. We took a vote initially to see who we thought would be most relevant, narrowed it down to, I think, three or four candidates, and then just sort of by a process of just talking it out and discussing the qualities, the involvement, and things like that, that we came to unanimous vote by the Board of those two candidates.
Do any of the trustees have anything to offer as well? Because just like the councilors, the trustees have an equal voice in this.
Did that answer your question? I guess I was thinking, we had it down to two candidates, and we took a straw vote first of those two candidates. And those two candidates that we're putting forward two had majority of those two straw votes. So that's how we came to the two recommendations. Was that your question? That's how I feel, what you were, that's how I would answer your question, is what I was saying.
I was just looking to make sure that we understood the process fully, how you arrived at it, you know, how close the candidate, you know, how close the decision was for the candidates, you know, how many were ultimately in the running of the eight? Just trying to get a better sense. So we have, because you obviously spent more time than the council has on that, but we're also not in the position to just be rubber stamping anybody that comes before us, because we are, you know, this is a joint, you know, meeting for a reason. So I want to be sure that we're, you know, we're asking the questions as well.
Right.
To understand the process, and we're comfortable with that.
I just want to add that, like Ms. McGonagall Santos, a number of us did know one or more of the candidates. And so every candidate, we feel really, no one came, as far as I'm aware, committed to any candidate. But we, at the table, expressed who we knew from, whether it was committee work, or whether we knew someone from church or from our neighborhood or whatever. We put that out there. And then, as Kevin mentioned, we walked through, talked through all the resumes, you know, eight through eight, before we had any narrowing down discussion about them. And we got our chances to, no one really pushed hard for someone they knew. No one tried to, you know, twist an arm and say, I really owe it to this person to give them my vote. But we put, you know, ones out, this is why I think this person, my neighbor, my friend, my whatever, is a good candidate, and then it was out there on the table. It was, you know, sometimes you discuss, and you say, you put it on the table, what's on the table is for anyone to take and either, you know, continue advocating for that person or to say, I've said my piece about this person. And then all the candidates were essentially even, and we discussed on their characteristics, their personalities, their strengths, what our weaknesses in, what would fit us and help make us a better board.
Councilor Smith Galvin?
So I just wanted to thank you for all the work you put into it. Obviously, from that extended explanation, you did put a lot of time and thought into this. And I am going to support the recommendation of the trustees. You're an elected body. The library has proven itself again and again to be a very, very well-run organization under your leadership. And I have to trust that you know, based on the candidates that you had in front of you, you know what you need to continue to build that committee. So I thank you for your work, and I'll be supporting your recommendations.
Vice Chair Santos?
I will take Stacy's name off, because not everyone agrees with me on this board, but I feel very strong that we should do a unanimous vote whenever we can. So I will support both candidates, because I know you have put good work into it, and I didn't mean to suggest that you didn't. I just, she was my candidate and could deliver everything you suggested. So I just wanted, now knowing that that's going to go, you know, that wouldn't succeed, I want to take that name off and very happily support it unanimously.
We appreciate that, and just for everyone's benefit too. That's the same process we go through. We always like unanimous votes.
Yeah, it's always good.
There were, you know, like the trustee said, there were other candidates who, you know, at first received some votes and others didn't receive, but at the end of the day, it was a unanimous vote. And I think that we're very thankful of the support from the town and from everybody else. And I think, like you said, I think that all the candidates were really great. I mean, so I don't think we could have made a wrong decision on any of them. So we appreciate, we appreciate all of your efforts and comments tonight as well.
And I'll just remind everyone too, that all candidate resumes are available online on our website, and so in the meeting packet of the town council. So you can see who the candidates were. And I realize this is only for seven months, but it's more about the public understanding of the process.
Sure.
And so whether it's seven months or seven years, I think having a clear understanding of what the process is is really important for everyone watching at home to understand. So with that, I would suggest that we just take, we have two slots to fill out. I suggest we take them individually, and then each person gets their own vote. So with that, I'll entertain any motions from other trustees or town council for a trustee, interim trustee nominee.
I move that we put Adam Rogers' name as one of the trustees.
All right. All right, moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Councilor Smith Galvin. Any discussion by anyone here? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of Adam Rogers, interim trustee? Appears to be unanimous? Yes. You know, so that would make us thirteen to zero. Madam Clerk? All right, and I'll entertain a second motion for the appointment of a second interim trustee.
I, no one's talking. I all move that we put Laura Goodwin's name as the second trustee.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on Laura Godwin? All right, seeing none, the motion before you is the appointment of Laura Godwin as the second interim trustee through April of 2020. All those in favor? Seeing, again, unanimous thirteen to zero vote. Thank you for all of your hard work. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
We have two notices of events on the agenda for tonight, item number eight. The first is the Wakefield Historical Society, and it will be presenting tonight some activities coming up this weekend in celebration of the three-hundred-and-seventy-fifth anniversary of Wakefield. So I'm happy to welcome Nancy Bertrand up.
I brought along a little, a little artifact to put you all in the mood. This is actually a lightbulb banner that we had hanging from all the lightbulbs in 1994. We had them done by Bob Sardella, Sardella Sign, local business, celebrate the history. And that's what we were doing then, and that's what we're still doing now. And we're very excited about all of our plans for the upcoming Wakefield Heritage Day, which is this Saturday, September twenty-eighth. We'll start out early in the morning, nine-thirty in the morning. The museum will be open, the museum featuring an exhibit about Cyrus Wakefield and Wakefield, Wicker, and Ratan. That's our main focus, but we always have standing exhibits which reflect the World War I sacrifices of various members of the community, the Revolutionary War, the Civil War. So all of those things, the totality of the town, we try to encompass in one little building. And so the museum open house will be going on. And also, we'll be having a fall farm stand for some fall color out in the schoolyard and historic crafts. We're excited to have Sarah Gurren, who artisan makes shoes and boots. She has a business called Sabatous, and she just is a remarkable person who is going to do demonstrations for two hours during the day. And also, we have our curator, David Workman, who is also a very talented artist and craftsman himself. And he's going to be demonstrating white coopering, which is basically carving out various items. And so that should be exciting for people to see. And we'll have visitors in historic attire around the schoolyard as well. We are very excited to be having trolley tours of the town, because of course, a lot of the town is made up of its buildings. And all of the buildings that we are going to be featuring have a very compelling story attached to it. The wonderful thing about local history. local history is that we can tell the story through the people, the individual people. We're all participating in local history tonight. And that's what we're going to be pinpointing as we go around to the various historic houses in the town. These are buildings that you might, and you probably do, pass every single day and don't have a clue about their history. So we're going to be offering three or four trolley tours going around the town throughout the day. The tours leave at 10:00, 11:00, and 12:00 noon. Also, the First Parish Congregational Church is participating by offering two tours of their sanctuary, which is very gracious of them. Of course, they're celebrating their history as well. And the Emmanuel Episcopal Church will also be having an open house, an opportunity for people to see inside their historic church building, which features two Tiffany windows. And of course, Tiffany windows are works of art. So it's a great opportunity for people to go into various houses of worship and other historic structures to celebrate the history. The Hartshorn House will also be having an open house for two hours, courtesy of the Hartshorn House Association Board of Directors. And then we have a very special dramatic presentation starting at 3 o'clock at the Americal Civic Center. And it is the story of Deborah Sampson, who was the first woman that we know of that actually served in the American Army. And it is, it's just really right that it is taking place in our historic armory. So we're very excited about that. And we hope that, we hope to see all of you. And we really appreciate the opportunity to tell everybody about it. I will also mention the opening night of the Linden Tree Coffee House at the Unitarian Universalist Church as well. It's important to us to, as we celebrate the 375th, to encompass the churches right around downtown, which is something that our Midsummer Night Celebration did every single year. Of course, we're heartbroken with everyone else about the Baptist Church. Very excited, though, that people will be able to go into the other three churches. So I thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate all of your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
The second event that we're looking to highlight this evening is Wakefield Alliance Against Violence's third annual 5K run and walk. I invited a couple of representatives from WAVE to come and talk about the event and promote it. There will also be a vote at the end relative to some signage that we can talk about after your presentation. If you could just identify yourselves.
I'm Julie Garrish, and this is Jeanne Tell, and we are board members. We are passionate members of Wakefield Alliance Against Violence, better known as WAVE. It's a community-based organization dedicated to creating a lifestyle free of violence. Our emphasis is on violence prevention. Our concern is violence of any kind is never okay. So how do we help? WAVE coordinates educational programs for students in school and for the community. Perhaps too many to explain tonight. Our emphasis is on violence prevention. WAVE connects people to agencies that offer intervention and direct service to people experiencing violence. Well, how do we manage all this? Public and business donations, community support, and our upcoming event. Jeanne and I are excited to let you know that WAVE's fourth annual Racing to End Domestic Violence event will be held on two Saturdays, will be held two Saturdays from now, on October 5th at 9:00 AM at the Lakeside Inn. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we hope that you can join us for this fun event as we help raise awareness. Racing to End Domestic Violence is a 5K run-walk around Lake Quanapawat that is professionally timed. All proceeds raised go towards WAVE's efforts to combat violence in our community. WAVE coordinates educational programs for students in schools and for the community. We also connect people to agencies that offer intervention and direct service to people experiencing violence. We also provide the Wakefield Police Department with gift cards for victims, survivors in need in our community. For more information to donate or to sign up for the race, please visit our website. Everybody got a pencil and pen? www.waveonline.org. Cash prizes will be presented at the after-party at the Lakeside Inn to the top three male and female finishers. Any children that are pre-registered will get a prize for their participation in the race. The top finishers' prizes are first place, $75; second place, $50; third place, $35. There will also be a 50/50 raffle. Light food will be served, and a cash bar will be available for the after-race party. Online registration closes at noon on October 3rd, and it's $30 to register. However, you can also register the day of the race from 7:30 in the morning till 8:45. The price does increase by $10 if you wait till that day. We're looking for beautiful weather and a lot of participation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Julie, I think also, if you're pre-registered, there's also T-shirts involved, I believe, correct?
Oh, yes. I didn't mention it because they had to sign up by the 18th.
Got it. All right. So they're no longer guaranteed then.
Not guaranteed, but...
She does have extra.
Yeah, she does have extra.
So please, we'd love to see you all join us. You're a very important class.
I'd even give mine away if somebody signs up.
Correct.
Now, there's another component to this as well. WAVE has a number of yard signs that look similar to some of the campaign signs we've seen all around town during the campaign cycles. They, when I was at the meeting last week, they had talked about the idea of having just a few around town on public property, or town property. One being in front of the high school, another, I think, I believe in front of the Americal, perhaps one in front of Town Hall, and any along like the strip between the roadway and the sidewalk, the grass strip as well, in front of people's homes, so they're more visible. We don't have a policy on that currently, so it was a request that they were asking for to promote this event. I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of benefit to doing that for not just this event itself, but also just the work that WAVE does. And if it drives even one person to the website, then I think it's mission accomplished relative to that. So I'll entertain a motion, have a second, have any discussion on that, and then we can answer any questions.
I move that we allow the posting of signs promoting WAVE wherever you think we think is appropriate.
Second. Discussion? Seeing none. And just to be clear, we're not talking about 300 signs going around town. We're talking about, we're talking about a few.
We made that very clear just then. Yes, no.
We're just talking about a few signs in strategic locations. There will not be any along the lake itself. There's a lot of sensitivities around any sort of signage around the lake, but anywhere else around town on public property.
There are quite a few of them out that you'll notice going around in different neighborhoods.
Right. And they will, and they'll come down right at the event as well. All right. So with that, we have a motion, seconded by Mr. Daco. All right, so any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
All right.
Six-zero. Best of luck to you with the event.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Keeping our fingers crossed for good weather for you, too.
I know. Hope and for, right.
Thank you so much. Good night.
Item number nine on tonight's agenda is Committee, Board, and Commission Updates. This is something that we began several months ago, and it's the opportunity for committees, boards, and commissions to come before the council, to talk about projects they have been working on, projects they see off on the horizon, or any other new initiatives. And it affords the council and the public an opportunity to have a better understanding of the sort of work that each different committee, commission, or board is doing. Tonight, we're very fortunate to have the Zoning Board of Appeals, the ZBA, here. There's a lot of activity going on around town relative to the ZBA. And I know there are a lot of, you know, resident questions as well. And so I've asked the ZBA to come here tonight to present just an overview of where things are at currently, where things are headed going forward, and then answer any questions of the counselors. So with that, if you could identify yourselves.
Happy to do so. Good evening. Dave Hatfield, Chairman of the Board of Appeals. To my left, our Board Clerk, Amy Wall. We also have with us other board members. I just want to point them out in case you haven't met them personally, Mike Feeley, Joe Pride, Jim McBane, and Greg McIntosh.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. Welcome.
Which button?
Do I do the arrow?
It's just the arrow to advance the slides.
Okay.
So our plan is to review these slides that were in your packet and then answer any questions. Does that sound, sound fine?
Certainly.
Okay. So just as a sort of an introduction, again, for anyone who's not as familiar with the bylaws, the Board of Appeals is governed by two sets of statutes, both at the state and local level. So at the state level, it's Chapter 48, which sets sort of the overall umbrella for zoning. And then within our town, we've got Chapter 190, which lays out the detailed requirements and bylaws for our town. Zoning maps, detailed, you know, setbacks and uses and all of that for the town itself. And as you probably are aware, we hear appeals. We adjudicate special permits, variances, and findings for the extension, reconstruction, or alteration of pre-existing non-conforming structures. A lot of the uses and structures in town predate zoning, so if somebody wants to make a change to something, they typically have to come before us to make a finding in what they're doing. With regard to zoning bylaw amendments, though, we do not adjudicate those. The other special permit granting authority in town is the Planning Board. So people can bring forward, the town council, the town planner, citizens could bring forward a potential zoning change. It goes in public hearing before the Planning Board. And if it gets recommendations out of the Planning Board, then it goes to town meeting, and a three-quarter vote there would pass them. And I mentioned that in part because it comes up in a couple of slides. So our activity. So yes, we are busy. Over the last year, we've deliberated or are currently deliberating on 77 individual petitions. They vary from variances, permits, and findings. And we'll go through those in summary in the next couple of slides. So first and foremost, one of the newer ones is 178 Albion Street, otherwise known as Harvard Mills. This is a conversion of office space into residential units, 183 units. 404 Lowell Street, we actually permitted this a couple of years ago, but I think there was a change in the developer. They came back for some design changes, which we granted last year. So I included that on the list. That is eight units. It's across from where Four Corners, Melatharbs, that strip mall. It's a vacant lot, so it's already been demoed. We're just waiting for a shovel to be put to the ground, honestly, but we're looking forward to that. A reuse of a property that was in tough straits. 37 Water Street, we, the Tall Spire School, as you all know, needed a new home, and the building being redeveloped there at 27 and 37, they found some space there, and we permitted that. While the rest of the building was built out, this space was available to them, so we granted that earlier this year. The overall building, 27 and 37, as you drive by, you can see that that's undergoing quite a bit of construction. Again, conversion of existing office space into a mixed-use development with 46 residential units and some office retail, I think, planned for the first floor. We do various wireless communications, so there's no, there's a lot of existing towers, things around buildings and steeples. And what the carriers have been doing is coming before us to upgrade from 3G to 4G, or 4G to 5. And so those upgrades that we have to make administrative findings. We haven't had any requests for new stuff, but in the past year, we've done some of these upgrades. Residential, there's a variety of residential stuff that we get from variances, findings, accessory apartments. Somebody wants to put a pool, but it might go out to the side yard, so we have to, there's some, you know, requirements for that. Renovations and additions, as I said. Some involve conversions from two to three family. Some are legality issues where there's an inconsistency between how it's being used. It might have been used always as a three-family, but according to the building department or other department, it might only be thought of as a two. And so there might be a problem selling it with, until we make a finding that it's being used as it's, or we find that it's as it's being used. So we make a few of those as well. And then various signage. As you drive around town, I'm sure you've seen signs in different locations, as noted here. The Pride Self-Storage, Liberty Mazda, they seem to rebrand their dealership every couple of years. They go with different colors. Extra Storage, even though that was a new storage facility, they had to come back for a signed, with a signed package after the original special permit was granted. Best Friend's Pet Gear up the end of Main Street was recently done, as well as a new one, Ironside Financial, going in next to the Dollar Tree. So these continue as businesses change hands, and it's an ongoing thing. But that's what's ongoing currently. Did we, did we skip what was already approved? Oh, no. We're on to ongoing. Okay. All right. What's ongoing? Zero Tarrant Lane, this is a 40B, I think you've all heard of this one, proposed as 173 units. I think we're at the, nearing the end of this. It may actually get voted on in the next couple of meetings. 998 to 1,000 Main Street, Greenwood Station, also a 40B, smaller scale. I think it was originally proposed at 27. It's now down to 24 units. Three addresses, 119, 127, 135 Nahant. There's actually two, single family with a business, a zone in the back. If you remember, it's Precision Tool &amp; Die, I think, was back there, abandoned, and somebody's proposing to redevelop that with 26 residential units. 259 and 267 Water Street, proposing 16 units. This is across from S&amp;M Liquors on the corner of Del Carmine. So that one, again, is being reviewed right now. One, several of these after this are new, just came up in our last meeting or two. 200 to 400 Quanapawat, that's the building at the top of the lake, American Mutual. A lot of Wakefield residents remember that. But it was also that data warehouse for a while with the big generators outside and the lampposts that we won't talk about anymore. But that's being proposed as a research and testing lab. The interesting one here, and some offices, and they're proposing some site improvement, which was all fine. The interesting thing here is it's rare that we don't get an application where we don't exactly know what's going in there. They just want to have it available in their marketing as a research and development facility, but they don't quite have a tenant. So there were some initial questions about the type of tenant that might go in there. So we're still looking at that one. And then there's a few gas stations, 343 are service stations, Albion Street, the corner of Jordan Ave. They want to, proposing to change the use of that one. 590 Main Street is, I think, next to the McDonald's and Walgreens. They want to rebrand that as Shell and change the car wash situation and the vacuums and all of that, so we're still looking at that one. And 950 Main Street, again, improvements, that's the mobile in Greenwood on the corner of Main and Oak, I think. So again, all new applications and things being reviewed as we speak. As well as, again, ongoing residential variances. There's a couple, these are all in Greenwood. Glendale Ave and Wildwood and Zero Osby Lane, I think, are budding properties. And then Cherry Lane and Zero Greenwood is a little further down, Greenwood heading towards Melrose. We're in the midst of that as well. So I know what some people have asked about and continues to get press and in social media, of the multifamily and mixed use. So I've got a couple of slides on this, both sort of a big picture one, as well as sort of a detailed one on how we, the process in which we go about reviewing individual projects. So the big picture, I think we can trace a lot of what we're seeing going on in town. We can trace it back to the town meeting in 2015 that approved zoning changes that encouraged mixed use and multi-development, denser ones, especially within a perimeter around the commuter rail and that area. That was proposed by the town planner. It was, again, adjudicated through the Planning Board in public hearing and voted on a town meeting. And I think a lot of what we're seeing now can be traced back to that vote, because since then, we've seen a handful of projects, and we were aware of a couple more that might be in the pipeline. Right? Most of the projects we would maintain are revitalizing abandoned or underutilized properties. If you think of what was there before them, it's really making improvements in the properties themselves. Some were dirty sites, and they're being cleaned, like on Foundry Street. I think there was even an issue at 175 North where Tonos is now. So again, those are seen as improvements. You bring in new tenants, new customers, new tax base, but you also bring in more traffic. And we understand that. Most, if not all, the projects, we think, are consistent with the vision, not only of the master plan, there was an economic aspect to the master plan back in 2004 that I think contemplated some development, especially around the north half corridor. And then this Wakefield's housing plan, the 2015 to 2020 housing plan, which defined and promoted, among other things, smart growth development in different areas of town, which, again, include the ones that we're seeing today. But having said that, the Board of Appeals does share concerns about the collective traffic impact, especially on the west side, because that is where that north half commuter rail corridor is. And it came up during a couple of our hearings, and we agreed, let's send a letter voicing these concerns and some... and suggesting that we, the town, maybe the Town Council, through the Traffic Advisory Committee, through the DBW, whatever agencies or municipalities we thought would be beneficial, would look at the big picture of what's the total potential impact and ways that we could collectively try to mitigate what's going on. We issued that letter back in September of eighteen. Of course, if there were discussions, we'd be happy to have a seat at that table. I don't know, there's no easy answer, Steve and I have talked about it, I've talked about it with Lieutenant Scory at the time when he was on the TAC. I don't know that there's any, we don't know that there's any easy answers. We may even take an outside consultant to like, look at the big picture, what could be done to help mitigate the, you know, the ongoing development. With individual projects, because this is, when they get applied and we get the plans, this is typically the first time we get to see them. We see what's being proposed, where it's being proposed, and what the developer wishes to do. These meetings never occur in one night, there's just too much to consider here with these projects. They always require multiple meetings, some have taken eight, ten, twelve meetings over several months. We usually start after an initial presentation and some question and answer sessions. We usually start with architecture, mass, and we want to make sure that what they're being proposed, the number of units, the size, the design, we think we need to adjudicate that stuff first and see if it fits in the neighborhood, is consistent with the style of the town and the neighborhood. And we'll work usually a couple of meetings just through that until we feel comfortable at least moving forward. It's not a done deal necessarily at that point, but at least enough to move forward. And then we get into site civil aspects, traffic and parking, which again, the applicant will almost always have their own traffic study done at their expense. But then we would get a peer review from our own Traffic Advisory Council Committee, excuse me. And they would make recommendations on behalf of the town that might impact some of the details and aspects of the project. And then landscaping, lighting, signage, operation and maintenance, so this is an important aspect. Again, we don't, if we approve something, we don't want it necessarily just look nice on day one. There has to be some operation and maintenance considerations for maintaining the site, the landscaping, where they put in the snow, you know, inspecting mechanicals, the storage, the stormwater drainage, all that stuff needs to be maintained so that the site stays in good condition over time. So that's an important document we always review, as well as a construction schedule, so we know what they're planning to do and how long it may take. And then they reach out from there, once approved, they'll have to work with the Police Department. You'll see temporary closures and sidewalk arrangements made for these. All the petitions are sent to all the other town municipal departments. We typically hear from the Fire Department, DPW, the Town Engineer, sometimes the Board of Health, CONCOM, if it might be in their jurisdiction. So all the town boards have an opportunity to weigh in on their own perspective of what's being proposed. And those can help, again, shape what goes on there, either in terms of changing the design in some way or conditions that would accompany our decision. Public testimony, of course, is heard at every hearing for every project, and we have to account for all of that in our adjudication. What we've been doing in more recently, I think, is with some of these larger projects, is also had subcommittees of two members working with the applicant offline in between meetings to work out some of the details. Usually it's on the design, the architecture stuff that can take time to adjudicate. And to help save some time during the public hearing, they may work on some details offline, bring back an updated proposal, and then present it in open hearing with the rest of the board having a chance to ask comments and questions, and then the public as well. So we found that that has helped save time, it's been efficient use of time, and they work out a lot of the details that we don't have to necessarily take up in public hearing with such a busy schedule every time. So at the end, when they get approved, there's then still work to be done. And it's stuff that I think goes under the radar, but I just want to finish with these couple of thoughts. So they always have to submit a building set of plans, those are the large, to the Building Department, this is what we actually want to build, it's a lot more detailed. And one of our Board members, usually Mr. McBane, is the lucky one, reviews it and makes sure they're consistent with what we approved. And oftentimes, he'll find discrepancies, and it's good to correct them right then and there before a shovel goes in the ground, right? Saves a lot of time and hassle later. We also typically request a mock-up panel, and that's where they would use actual materials, actual colors, on-site during the construction, with actual windows and siding of materials that we approve, and they would build a mock-up panel, we would go inspect it, just to make sure it's all going to work. And sometimes we find things that we might want to tweak, and we do. So again, it's a way, sort of before it's all done, to make sure what we approved and what we think we're getting, we're going to get. And then finally, when it's almost done, there's a final walkthrough, just again, to make sure that what they've built is accordance with our plans. Sometimes there's punchless items, sometimes something wasn't done the way we approved it, they may have to come back for a minor modification, things like that, just to make sure what gets built is what we approved or with some minor mods. Sometimes we find things and sometimes we don't. But again, we just make sure at the end, things are done the way they're supposed to. So just to give you an overview, that's just for one mixed use. That was it for our slides. Have any entertaining questions?
Thank you so much for coming and for really providing a very informative presentation here, because I think it's important, not just for the council, but also for the public, to understand exactly what that process looks like and where you are in the process and for any project. Does anyone on the council have questions?
So I just wanted to thank you. I just wanted to thank you all for coming and presenting. I think I kind of have been asking for committees and commissions to just come so I can hear about the work that you guys are doing and see all the time and thank you for your volunteering. I will say that the ZBA meeting was the first town meeting I went to when I moved to Wakefield, because I lived next door to the then Subaru dealership. And so that, turning into Home Rock Health, I went to a lot of those public hearings and so I saw the good work that you do. So I just want to thank you. One thing that I do want to highlight, it was so great to kind of see all the projects going on and listing them, and I had a meeting with Town Administrator Mayo, and we'll talk about it a little later, about folks moving to our town because of living near the commuter rail and all those mixed-use developments that are coming in, and folks using the commuter rail and the buses to get to the city. And we just submitted a letter to the Department of Transportation asking for some improvements on routes and travel times because the usage is so great, and it's why people are moving here. So I just want to thank you guys for your part of getting people to move here and being thoughtful and deliberate about it.
Thank you. Counselor Dunakow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for coming in and with your board and speaking on the ZBA's activities, for another word. It's an arduous task. I've sat on the Planning Board for nine years, so dealing with plans and trying to put across the best proposals is always a task at hand, and you can't please everyone. I know that for a fact. And I'm not sure if Mr. McBane will accept being the lucky one or not. But to that point, I just have a couple of questions when it comes to all the development that's going on in the town. I understand now the trend is to go away from subdivisions and do more apartments and condominiums, more bang for the buck, so to speak. Where the units are being built is part of my concern, where they're in a commercial area. Even though we have the mixed use, it's always good, in my opinion, to try to have as much of a business component on the bottom as possible to maintain that commercial. I understand there's two trains of thoughts on the process, that you're bringing in fifty units at four hundred thousand per unit, that's a lot of money coming in. But for someone who has to set the tax rate, when we have residential set at seventy-two percent of our taxes and commercial at twenty-eight, if we eliminate our commercial properties and put nothing but residential in, when it comes down to us to shift the tax rate, we have less to shift it to where the commercial is being removed. I worry about that in the future, because we have been able to maintain, at least in my tenure, a very low tax rate in doing so. I commend you for the job that you're doing with the affordability side. I asked for the numbers to be pulled on this. If we obtain the full count on what's on your plate right now, we should hit ten percent, okay? And that's a goal that I've been searching for for the last fifteen years. I know it's hard, but with all the multiple units coming in, I worry that the next census that turns, whether or not our number's going to climb.
Yes.
And then affordability's going to drop. So it's a catch-22, okay? But other communities hit that, I don't know how they're doing it, but we have a large growth going on, we should be hitting that number, I don't know why we're not. I'm not saying it's you, but I'm just saying, I don't know why we're not.
We're close.
Yeah, we are close.
And he said, the next census, it may increase the housing unit stock, which would then lower the ratio.
Correct.
We've been, and these 40Bs have gotten us closer, they get you a lot closer than the individual ones, where the bylaw says you have to have eighteen percent of them as an affordable component. And, you know, we're trying to get to ten, so as long as we maintain the eighteen or thereabouts, incrementally, it should get us there.
It should get there.
But you almost need a few 40B kind of projects to kind of get you, and we're close.
Which is something that if you had your ten percent, I think that you can actually call someone and say, hey, listen, let's work together, okay? Instead of you going just full 40B, let's do something that's inclusionary, that works for the better and good of the town.
Correct, it gives us a more leverage.
That's correct. So now, in your notes, you mentioned that the Board of Selectmen were sent a letter from you in September 2018. I don't think I've ever seen the letter.
I sent it...
That wasn't to the Board of Selectmen, it was to the departments.
Oh, it's just to the departments.
Sorry, may I misspoke if I say Town Council, it was to...
It was to the departments, I anticipated that meaning, we would have received a copy of that letter, that's fine.
Yeah, no, we can provide you one, it was Steve, it was DPW, it was TAC, the main, I think, players we thought might be part of the conversation, but I can certainly share it.
I'd say, Mr. Dunakow, as soon as I learned of that letter, I asked Town Administrator who pulled it, and our clerk will be distributing that to all of us. So we'll have a copy of that, but it had gone only to the departments back last fall.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Certainly.
Now, do you know what, on the last question now, is the head of the lake, do you know if they're doing bio up there? Or do you have any idea what they're doing up there?
We don't know.
Not yet? Because we have the bylaw that I believe right now that's in place that gives them a break if they do that, is right, Mr. Mayo? And did we just approve, not just, didn't we approve a bylaw that were, if, to entice them to come into the town for bio?
I'd have to look at it. I don't recall. I don't recall it, but I'd have to look. We did, okay.
We have it in place, okay?
It was in two town meetings ago?
Yeah.
I think they're trying to keep their options open at this time, they're listening to our concerns and going forward with that, but just trying to see what they can get approved so that what they can put out to the public of who's going to come in and rent from them.
Your boards are doing a great job.
Thanks. Counselor Chines.
Well, first of all, I just want to echo our thanks that you've heard from others at the table. I mean, I think, you know, we know, and I think a lot of people in town know just how arduous the work is. For folks in town that don't know, I know that your meetings can stretch to very late hours. Hopefully, we won't be there quite as late tonight here, but, you know, there's a lot of work, there's a lot of detail that goes into what you do. You know, I really thank you for the work that goes in from every member of the committee. This is not an easy board to be part of by any stretch of the imagination. I had sort of two requests and a question. First of all, the two requests that I had, you know, because of the importance of what you do, because I think of the interest in the community and development that's happening in the town and so forth, you know, I'd like to maybe request the ZBA to consider looking at getting your meetings videoed by WCAT or broadcast so that folks have a chance to watch them and participate, even if they're not there live. Would also encourage, this may have been lost in the translation to the new website, but some of the meeting minutes from prior meetings don't look like they're available, and if that's something that we could address, I think that'd be a great step forward. Again, I think what you guys do is so important that having that information out there for the public is really critical. Question I wanted to ask, actually relates to something Counselor Dunakow brought up. We are fairly close to the ten percent threshold when it comes to 40B. You know, if you look at the projections of Tarrant Lane and some of the other developments, Foundry Street, that should get us to that ten percent threshold. You know, my question is, as a Board of Appeals, how does your strategy change? How does your approach change with regard to promoting the development of affordable housing in Wakefield or sort of mid-market rate housing in Wakefield in that environment where effectively the hammer of 40B isn't on you as a committee because we would be over the ten percent threshold?
I don't think they promote anything.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I don't know that it's necessarily in our jurisdiction to promote anything. You know, and we haven't gotten to the ten percent, so when we get there and we're able to maybe have a little more control or say, and somebody wants to come in and do a certain type of project, we may be able to say, no, we'd rather not see that, and we'd have some sort of basis, you know, grounds to base that on and go for a different kind of development. But at the end of the day, if somebody buys a piece of property and wants to propose something, it's not really our charge to go out and try to market what we'd like to see there. I mean, it's hard for us to say in that regard. You know, that could be people, other municipal boards, the Town Planner, who might hear of something that might, some property that might be available, or some developer might be looking to do something, maybe can encourage certain things. You know, again, I don't quite know how we do that as a collective town, to market certain developments. But it's not something we've been typically involved in up to this point.
Let me ask you...
I do have comments on your other questions, I should want to follow up with that first. Okay, so regarding videotaping our meetings, that'd be fine. I think it's ultimately the town's call and, you know, the resources of WCAT to be able to do that. Our meetings are at Town Hall in the first world conference room. Could that be done? I mean, the logistics of it, right? Would that mean moving our meetings here? Would that mean doing it over there? Do they have the resources, the volunteer time to do that? Again, as you said, they can go late, we've had a couple pass twelve-thirty the last month or two. You know, so it's just something to think about logistics-wise. And again, if we were going to do it for the ZBA, are we thinking of other boards too? I mean, again, if it's all about transparency and, you know, let's consider some of the other boards that do equally important things in town in different capacities, so.
And just to be clear, that's not a question that I would direct just to you guys.
No, no, but we're here before you.
Yep.
But, so yeah, we'd be fine with that. Again, logistically, cost-wise, whatever it would take, I think it's ultimately, the Town Council points us, so if you'd like to see it happen, and we can find a way to make it happen, sure. With regarding minutes, from what I can see on the town website, I've only seen the Town Council minutes. So again, if we want minutes, they're available. All the town boards and committees should probably post their minutes, so.
Absolutely.
Whatever it would take to do, fine.
I don't know that we've ever actually been asked to put them anywhere.
I don't know if Gail's been asked, she's our secretary, she's not here this evening, but they're available, so they can be posted along with all the others, so I would say, fine, let's do that.
Great. Thank you very much, and again, thanks for all your great work. Just a little bit on the cameras piece, I've actually been working with Town Administrator Mayo on this last few months, we've been talking about being able to set it up with the help of IT, set up cameras for all meetings that would happen at Town Hall. So that would, you would be obviously amongst the many on that. So I think we're making headway there, we're just trying to figure out logistics to make that happen, but that's been a work in progress, something that I expect will be brought before this council in the near term, over the next several meetings, certainly. I think two things that you mentioned, first off, I thank all of you for the work that you do. Those twelve-thirty AM, you know, meetings are not a rarity. I know you do a lot of work, and something that I think often gets lost in this is you're all residents as well. So you live here, these decisions that you're making impact your lives as well. They impact your traffic, you know, they impact your schools, your first responders. So I think that that's an important piece, you're not divorced from the decisions you're making because, you know, you're here, just like all of us. Another point that I think often gets lost in the discussion is there is a number of new development opportunities, there are many in town, especially in recent years. But a lot of folks feel like they haven't seen that translate into any sort of tax relief. And it's a broader question, not so much for the ZBA, but in general, how it is that this new construction, this new development, where we're increasing the value of a property, be it residential or commercial, and I think probably in every instance, the value of that property, whatever land that is being taken up, that value is going up, and presumably, the tax revenue being generated is greater than before the development. But how do we translate that into some sort of, some form of tax relief to the residents? And I think that's one of the frustrations that I'm often hearing, so much is happening here, but I'm not seeing enough movement. And so I think it's probably more of a discussion for us, you know, when we talk about tax rates, but I do think it's something we need to be very mindful of, because there are certain sacrifices that are being made for this development to happen, but where is the offset for it? And I don't think we, as residents, are seeing that offset in the form of any sort of tax relief currently. The other...
Maybe a discussion of town, you know, the assessor and the...
Indeed.
Helping to understand how that, how the new developments turn into tax revenue and how it's...
Yeah, because I'm not sure if that's in our purview to figure that out.
And certainly not, no. But I think it's a part of a broader discussion, and that kind of parlay's into my second point of this idea of smart growth development. of this idea of smart growth development. I'm not sure that everyone is on the same page in terms of what that means. And I think we as a community, as a town, need to have better collaboration so that we have an understanding. You are, in, in a lot of, a lot of ways, an independent organization entity. You're appointed by the Town Council, but you make decisions, you know, under, you know, statute, statutory authority. That being said, I think if the ZBA had a better understanding of what the general will of the community was and where we prioritize things, and that, I think that comes from the top, I think this comes from the council down. I think there's, there's opportunity there for more collaboration that doesn't currently exist. You mentioned the traffic. Every developer is gonna be able to have their own traffic study and have, I would imagine, some, like, a favorable traffic study saying it's not gonna have, their development won't have much of an impact. And then I understand the peer review through TAC, which is, which is helpful, but taking a more comprehensive approach, so you're not just looking at X, Y, and Z projects, but you're looking at in total. And if there are particular areas of town that, that, and maybe it's the West Side, you know, and there's been a lot of discussion there, or other areas where there's just, you know, it's, it's almost like a heat map in a way. You know, these are the red zones. You have to be super mindful of that. But I think that, that responsibility also falls on the council and falls on, on us being able to quarterback this better and working with other, other, you know, Conservation Commission or, or ZBA or any of the other, you know, commissions, councils, uh, committees or boards to make sure that we're all on the same page, so that we're not sacrificing services, so that we're making sure that quality of life issues aren't compromised. And we also have a broader vision that we can then present to ZBA and say, this is where we think the town would like to be headed. How can you, because there is some discretion in, in your decision-making, you know, but I think a little bit more guidance would be helpful.
And that's part of what was in that letter.
Yeah.
Was like, you know, taking that big picture, maybe there's some, with a study and some recommendations, things that the board could then apply to future projects to say, hey, you know, not, we still have the statutes and the special permit criteria. I mean, the criteria has to be met, and that's our guidance.
Right.
It's our bylaw. But with some discretion, as you said, if there's a big picture or study and we, if you want this project, then we need these, to see these elements in your plan, because this is what we need to do as a town to mitigate the, the impacts, right? And that's what we need. We don't have that currently in our, in our black belt.
And we have to be quarterbacking big picture.
Yeah.
Because ev, you know, every project is, is looked at in a vacuum. There's a lot of siloing that goes on, even when you're circulating around amongst departments. But we have to be able to provide kind of a, a, a broader plan, you know, a broader vision of where we see things going with the town.
And to your point with the, the, the smart growth, I would just refer back to, again, I, um, the, the housing development plan from two thousand fifteen. It does, it does go into detail about defining smart growth and kind of what the, what the criteria are. Again, if, if we need to rethink that as a town, maybe we revisit that, you know, through the town planner and again, the other folks who contributed to that. Again, but that's, again, one of the bases for when people talk about smart growth and what it means in this area and this town specifically, along certain corridors, certain types of development, encouraging commuters and that kind of thing. That's what it spoke to, and that's, I think, what we're seeing. It's just, you know, people ask, where's the tipping point? How much is enough? But again, without, without the greater guidance from the community, from, from your board and other boards, we look at each one on its own and do the studies on its own, and if it meets a criteria, it passes, right?
And it's not just population-driven either, because a, a project that has, that adds very few residents could actually have a, a far more profound impact in, in a particular area. So I think there, there's a really comprehensive kind of collaborative way of approaching this to make sure that, you know, we do have, we offer some more direction, and that's, that's part of the collaboration I'd like to see us doing in, you know, in, in the months and, and years ahead certainly. Vice President Santos?
I agree with what Ed and Jonathan were talking about with regard to the collaboration. It was easy to sit on our boards fifteen, twenty years ago when Wakefield was doing nothing. I say, I use nothing. I use nothing in, quite, quite generally, but was status quo, like, for a while, as someone who's lived in this town most of her life. So it was easy to be in our boards when we just moved ahead quietly and slowly. Well, things are not happening like that anymore, in, in a really good way, in an exciting way. I think there are people that are hesitant about change, and you hear some concerns about that. But I think we, we need a strategic view. We need a collaborative view, so you guys are, understand your board, who does more work than we do definitely, but certainly that you know, okay, this is the idea of what Wakefield now should look like and what, and that does come from us down, from town administrators, so that's something we absolutely have to do. I think there's opportunities to have subcommittees, ad hoc committees with regard to traffic in West Side. Why couldn't it be a few people from ZBA, a few people from us schools with all that happening? And finally, you all received an email from me this summer talking about, hey, I'm liaison to applying for positions within your committees. So I will be sending that out again in January for those who are up for renewal for your position, so no one forgets.
That's us too.
That's us too. Awesome. Well, guess what?
We appreciate the reminder.
Yes, and you'll, you'll get another, you will get another reminder of that, just, we're trying to just, you know, make sure people are put on notice and, and thank you all for your work, but we have a lot, we have work to do to make sure that you're doing the best, that you have the guidance and we can give you the tools to do it.
And I think meetings like this too are helpful because people can watch it that can't necessarily come. We have a lot of meetings.
Yeah.
People don't know what we do, you know. We sit there for hours and hours and hours discussing projects, and there's nothing from the community. And then, you know, the, we make our decision, and all the Monday morning quarterbacks come running in, and everybody has something to say about it, but nobody was there, you know, so it's hard. You know, we had, we talked about Harvard Mills, which I think is gonna be a beautiful project. I personally was against it because of the size of it, but there was nobody there. There was not one person in the public that came, but I know once they stop building up, we're gonna hear things. So I think things like this are important, so that the community as a whole sees what we do. You know, some things we can do, some things we can't do, but they need to understand kind of a little bit more about what we do and what, where our hands are tied and where they're not tied. So I think these things are helpful.
Great.
Thank you. Well, thank you for coming in. Anyone that's watching at home too can go onto the town's website, under Town Council. In our meeting packet, we have the entire PowerPoint presentation, so they can flip through, and any questions, certainly reach out to board members. The town website also has all the members of, of your body when the, the terms expire, and also I believe the email addresses, I believe, as well, to be able to reach out to with any questions.
Actually, I don't think our emails.
Yeah, we don't have town email.
They can reach us through Gail Conroy, our secretary, in the Building Department.
Perfect.
Um, in closing, I would just say, second and fourth Wednesdays of every month, if anyone wants to come by, we invite you to.
And hang out till midnight.
Feel free to come by. Again, if you want to just attend a meeting and see how it goes firsthand and, and how much fun it is, but.
Great.
But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
All right, item number ten on, on tonight's agenda is liaison updates. Each counselor has been assigned as liaison to different departments or programs or initiatives, and we like to periodically go around and underst, understand what, what's going on in much the same way we just did with the ZBA. So why don't we start, first, if we could, Vice President Santos, anything to report on fire?
Yes, so the Fire Department has two exciting contract discussions coming up in the next several months. One is looking at the ambulance service in town and taking a much harder look, a more thoughtful look at it. Chief Sullivan, what's Gary's rank? Gary Hill?
Lieutenant, I believe.
Lieutenant?
I believe.
Okay.
Hopefully, I didn't just promote him.
That's okay. I'll give him that, I'll give him that. Lieutenant Gary Hill. And Tom Walsh, who's our phenomenal emergency prepared professional who is really so well-respected by both police and fire. So we're looking at that, I think, in a much more robust way than we've done in the past, and to get better service to our, to our town. Also, you know, we talked, it was brought up at, at town meeting a couple of meetings ago with regard to deputy fire chief position, so that is also something that, that's just about ready to be to be sent out for folks to apply. So we're hoping to see that in the next several months. But yeah, Fire Department's doing great. My other, you heard me, my liaison, which is two committees. So I emailed every person on every committee to just remind them of when they need to re-up their membership if they so desire, so those will be going out. I introduced myself in the summer. I'll be sending all those that need to re-up in January, so hopefully there'll be no, no one who can suggest that they didn't receive notice.
Great. Well, thank you for that update.
Just a, that's a good question on that. On the, on the, the sort of the individuals up for renewal, I'm assuming we're still posting sort of the call for positions, for those positions, so any from the public would be able to apply as well.
Hundred percent. We are doing everything that we've done in the past, but for people who are serving, who perhaps missed it in, in understanding or not understanding the process, although, you know, we certainly made that clear to them, we just want to give them also knowledge to, that they need to re-up.
Great, thank you.
Next, why don't we turn to schools and Counselor Chines?
Sure, so obviously this time, if you're a lot going on with the school department, we talked last time about the high school working group, which is in formation now. I think the first meeting is to be determined, but certainly speaking for myself and probably Counselor Santos, looking forward to getting that up and running. From a labor relations standpoint, the school department has ratified contracts with six of the seven bargaining units, which is great news. Unfortunately, the one that's remaining is the largest of the seven bargaining units, and so that's a, a fairly big deal, represents about eighty percent of the, the staff in the school department. They took a break over the summer from negotiations at the union's request and are back at the bargaining table, so as that hopefully gets resolved soon, I'll share an update there. Obviously, this is an important one because of the number of staff. It actually accounts for about twenty-five percent of the total town budget. So something certainly that Superintendent Lyons and the school committee are paying very close attention to. MCAS results are due to be released tomorrow, and I believe the school committee is getting an update on those results at tomorrow's school committee meeting. You know, in speaking with the superintendent, I think he's confident that we'll show some sustained progress there. We did talk, though, in general about sort of the use of MCAS results as part of the totality of how you evaluate school performance. And I spoke to him, and if it's acceptable to the chair as well, I think it would make sense maybe to have him come to a Town Council meeting to speak about not only our MCAS results, but what's the sum total of how the school department evaluates their performance? What are the metrics that are important to them in terms of measuring the value of the education that our, our kids get here in Wakefield? You know, there are a lot of things, such as the MCAS results, some of the public rankings that are out there, that tell sort of an incomplete story. And I think for all of us, particularly those of us, even though we don't have responsibility for managing the schools day to day, but certainly it's a big part of what we do as a community, I thought it would be helpful for us to have that opportunity to really understand, again, what are those measures that are important? How do we evaluate ourselves? Finally, just wanted to highlight another area focused this year for the school department is around the social and emotional needs of students. You know, certainly anyone who has kids in the school system understands how, how important that is in terms of our students' success. This was a, the main theme of the administrative retreat that Superintendent Lyons had over the summer. The school committee actually also added a subcommittee specifically to focus on student services as part of this broader theme. And so three of the school committee members, Amy Purcell, Ann Fortier, and Tom Flynn are part of that.
Great. I think the, the measuring value, if you had mentioned, might also be very appropriate for the tribe board meeting. This is why I've been come there as well, so that might be a good opportunity to, to address as one of the agenda items.
I, I think that's a great point, and I think obviously, you know, the school department, the school committee lives this. Certainly speaking as a former finance committee member, I, I think that, that framework, that understanding would be helpful as well.
Does the finance committee have a seat at the table with the negotiation, the labor negotiations?
I believe that they do not. You know, the impact of the negotiations obviously gets discussed with the finance committee. They have a, a subcommittee that works directly with the school committee on that, but in terms of being in the negotiation, that's really the school committee and the, the administration of the schools.
Got it. Thank you for that. Counselor Chines, why don't we go next to Counselor Smith Galvin for gas and light?
Sure. So in addition to some of the things that I think I've been updating on regularly, like the solar rebate program and the electric vehicles, which we're gonna talk about at the, at the next meeting, there, there has been, at their last meeting, the Light Department decided, the commissioners decided to change some how energy efficiency charges are collected and then expand the energy efficiency program. So essentially, right now, we all have a charge on our electric bill, a flat fee for energy efficiency, and it's gonna go more to a dollar per kilowatt hour. It's not a dollar, but it's, it's a, you know, pennies or, or mils, what they call mils per kilowatt hour, but it'll be more based on usage than on a flat rate. Now, because that is a rate change, there will be a public hearing at their next meeting, which is October second at six thirty at the Light Department. And really what this does is bring the energy efficiency program more in line with communities throughout the state. I, I think many people realize when they are doing renovations or changing that we don't have a very robust program compared to some of our neighbors in Mass Save or other programs. This will move towards fixing some of that. They'll be adding weatherization, heating system incentives, and again, be more consistent with surrounding communities and adding programs for both commercial and industrial customers. So that's probably the biggest thing to, to report on.
Thank you for that.
Sure. Sure.
On that, I remember having replaced all my windows and not having, you know, the benefit, which I understand, I, I love the gas and light department. I would never want to trade it in for anything else.
Of course.
But, so we're for energy efficiency. Are there ways, how do they tell who's being efficient? How do they?
Um, you can do audits.
Okay, so you can do an audit.
So, so yes, so, so there, there is an audit program existing, and it, it may be expanded under this, and there's a talk about kind of how to do that, but you're absolutely right. I think a lot of the thinking is, you know, solar is very exciting and all of that, but really, we have to look at energy efficiency and, and, and kind of looking at the household, household, what they call the envelope, before you can really move into some of these kind of carbon lowering technologies. And so, yeah, so there'll be, so there'll be audits as, as part of that program as well. And I guess I also have communications. Thank you. And Peter's not here today, but obviously, the, the, the big communications win, and I can certainly not take any credit for it, is Jen McDonald and the website. I'm getting pretty good feedback on that and be interested in what everybody else, you know, here and, and at home has to think about it. I mean, there's all, websites are great because they're dynamic, so if there are certain areas you can't find or, you know, information about the minutes, certainly those kinds of things, we now have a platform that we can build upon and change and make it work for us. So that's a first step in that. I would still like to, you know, spend the remaining months working on maybe more pushing out information through newsletters or other ways, but we're gonna continue to work on that.
Thank you for that. Any questions? I'm seeing none. Counselor Butt, arts and culture?
Sure, so I've been, um, took some notes. So I reported last, our last meeting about the Albion Culture Exchange Building and getting their bathroom, hopefully by the end of the year, as I look at Steve, but they are really excited about that. And so that's the big news from there. The other news, and I wish, I should have asked Director Catherine McDonald to talk about this, but Saturday's a pretty busy day in town, so it's the regular farmer's market, it's the three hundred and seventy-fifth birthday celebrations, and the library is celebrating, hold on, I have it here somewhere. The library is, is celebrating all things graphic with a comic conference event called BBCom. Or BBCom, from ten to four at the library. They're asking that folks dress up as your favorite comic hero or anime character. They're really excited. Events will be indoor and outdoor, first time ever, so Catherine asked that I share that news with everyone.
What are you just, what are you just?
Can I bring my comic book collection and sell it?
I've got short notice here, Counselor Butt.
I've talked to Catherine, talked to the library. There is information on their website, and they have a great flyer that we'll share somehow as well. But yeah, Comic Com, or BBCom.
Counselor Butt, is there anything else with social services?
No, that's it for now.
Got it, thank you. Thank you for that report. Counselor Dinoco, do you have anything other on police or community planning and economic development along with?
Well, we'll, let's start with the community economic development one. Right now, on that, we have a, a very rough draft that's been sent out for review and for comments to be put back to Mr. Mayo. It's just, we, we, it's really groundwork. I, I know that there's a lot of other communities out there that have the same type of director in place, whether, you can pick and choose from a lot of those other communities and say, this would might work in this town, may not work in this town. It's just gonna take some discussion, then something to be presented to this. to take some discussion, then something to be presented to this board for future consideration, but, I mean, we're still right at the beginning of it at this point. As far as the police department, the chief has been very elusive over the last few weeks as far as him being at meetings, so I have not had an opportunity to sit down with him, but I can tell you that, from personal firsthand knowledge of things that have been going on, the department should be commended on their assistance with the town of Linfield in finding an, an Alzheimer patient that had wandered out of Linfield, and our, the police department actually found the individual and made sure that they waited with them and contacted the proper person there and took care of it, so kudos to them. We just celebrated National Thank Police Officer Day this past week, so, I mean, this is all little things, and I do have to say, right now, the police department, through the new parking enforcement, they're doing a great job downtown because their parking spaces easily to be had right now, there's a lot of quick turnover, there's always going to be complaints, as Mr. Mayo can attest, but still, I think it's a, a, an opportunity that we took the right direction on at this present time, and once I sit down with the chief, I'll have a better presentation for his side of things at the next meeting.
Thank you. I will say, I've been in a number of meetings and conversations with Chief Scory in the recent weeks, so he's been doing a lot. He's, he's been all over town, certainly, so I recog, I recognize that. So, he has not, he, he's-
He's not going to lose you.
He's not there. He's been very visible.
Or this is a set town.
Well, he didn't exactly, man, for the last week, he was at a conference, and this week, he was at another meeting.
Right. He, he, he had some work, workday travel as well, but he's, but he's been very, he's been engaging a number of initiatives, I know, in the last few weeks in town.
Doesn't want to suggest that he's avoiding us.
I have one update relative to the finance committee, so finance committee applicants have, are going to be interviewed on October first and potentially on October third, if there are any that can't make the first, I'll be interviewing them along with our town moderator and our, our FinCom Chair, you know, as, as is required, and then we should hopefully have some, some names there at that time. All right. Any other questions about any liaison updates, any further updates to offer? All right, seeing none, thank you. We'll move on to item number eleven. Mr. Mayo, could you just briefly touch on this?
Sure. As the council and the town is aware, at our annual town meeting in May, we do pay for our bonds, and we transfer a certain amount of money to pay for the bonds at that town meeting. And in our explanation at that, or our presentation at town meeting, we talk about, there's a million dollars that's to a legislative act that comes right off the top, it's through our debt service account, was set up many, many years ago. Well, that's all well and good, but we actually, the town council does need to authorize the treasurer to move that money from the general fund to the debt service capital needs account. And we have this action every year at the, bought a selectman previously in the town council now. It's already been appropriated, technically, we just need to move it to the right account. So, I would love a motion to transfer a million dollars to the debt service capital needs account.
So moved. That moved by Councilor Chines, seconded by Councilor Dinaco, any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, the motion before you, Council, is to move the sum of, transfer one million dollars to the debt service capital needs account. All those in favor? Seeing a vote of six to zero, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayo.
Thank you.
Item number twelve is constituent issues, this is the opportunity for councilors to present before this body any issues that they've been hearing from residents, and if further action is required, we can certainly add them as an agenda item. No votes would be taken on anything discussed tonight, but it at least would put any particular issues at, at the forefront of our minds. So with that, any constituent issues? Councilor Chines?
Sure, so I, I actually have a, sort of a list today, so, you know, a number of us, Councilor Smith Galvin, Councilor Santos, and Councilor Butt and I were at the Wakefield Farmer's Market on, on Saturday for a beautiful morning, had a, a table for office hours with the town council, and as part of that, did a, an informal, very scientific, survey with pom poms, just to take the temperature of, you know, what folks were concerned about in town, what kind of issues were the most important to them. We also had sort of a number of write-in votes that were submitted, so I thought I would share, you know, both sort of the pom pom survey results as well as some of the write-ins. In terms of the pom pom survey, we had six buckets of issues that we asked people to weigh in on. The question was, Wakefield, what's important to you? The options were schools, lake, transit, downtown, social services, and roads, and that was the rough order of priority that we heard based on the number of pom poms. Schools got the most votes with thirty-four, down to roads with twenty-four, and everything else in the middle. We got a number of sort of write-in votes, if you will, that I, I thought were really helpful and interesting. In no particular order, a couple of them were publishing a town newsletter, doing more of that sort of push notification that Councilor Smith Galvin talked about. Greater efforts to reduce litter around Lake Wannapawood and other parts of town and downtown, we talked about the lake and, and as, as a resource in our last meeting when we were outside, and certainly that wasn't lost on people. We had a set of comments related to improvements to the recycling program in Wakefield. I think born out of a concern that what's being put into the recycling bin, either because of contamination or because of issues in the recycling market, that, that those materials aren't getting to places where they can be recycled, and so are there ways that we can improve the program to make sure that when we do recycle, that actually gets, gets recycled, whether that's, you know, ending commingled recycling in favor of having people sort again, having different drop-off areas or so forth. We got a, a plug for greater support for the BB library, which is obviously a great resource in town. We did get a couple of votes for greater budgetary support for the Wakefield Human Rights Commission, and while I am very supportive of them, I should mention, they were next to us at the table, so there may be a little bit of a bias there. We got a comment related to looking at and questioning whether there's any programming for LGBTQ seniors at the, through the Council on Aging, is that demographics growing in size? We did get a couple of comments asking the town council to work with the Wakefield Community Partnership on potentially changing the name of the Festival Italia. Some of the suggested names people wrote down were Wakefield Town Day, or the Wakefield International Festival, or something like that. We got a set of comments around changing the Wakefield Memorial High School mascot, or the, the logo with the, the W. And then, we got a set of comments from an individual about conditions on West Water Street, there's some sidewalks that are, are broken up, storm drains that haven't been cleaned, traffic with eighteen-wheelers and tractor trailers and so forth. All in all, I would say we had probably, I, I would say, a couple of hundred people that stopped by the table throughout the morning, really good engagement from residents, really good feedback, and this is a, a plug for the Wakefield Farmer's Market, from non-residents saying how much they enjoyed coming to town and coming to the setting by the lake, which was great to hear. And I, I think what was striking to me both this past Saturday, as well as earlier in the summer when we did office hours at the farmer's market, a number of new residents that actually stopped by the table, and it was also really energizing to talk to some of those folks and hear why they moved to Wakefield. So, great feedback, again, appreciate everyone who stopped by to say hello and made four hours at the farmer's market go by really quickly.
Interesting, side note, too, the bio, like, development that we're talking about in the Converse Building, that's apparently going to be rooted in pom pom research. So, it's good to know that going forward.
It's very scientific.
It's a kind of revolution.
Yes. Bringing it back to basics.
Thank you to Councilor Butt for bringing the pom poms and the glasses for that.
Indeed.
The brains behind the operation on Saturday.
Any other constituent issues?
I just had a few, a few things as well that was mentioned during the same time, just through conversations. One was kind of updates on where we are on the downtown revitalization, I see you may be giving that to us. I mean, specifically, does that come for a vote to town meeting? So, some questions around that, some questions that I haven't gotten a chance to follow up with Steve around sidewalk construction that apparently is now taking place near Dolbear and the high school, right at the same time that all the kids are walking to school, so, not quite sure what happened there, but there seems to be a lot of concern about that. I think that's about it.
Great, thank you. Anything further?
All right, seeing none, then I'll transition into item number thirteen, which is chairman's comments. Three items I just want to touch on briefly tonight. An update on the Public Safety Building, the Public Safety Building Reassessment Committee has been working in earnest for quite some time, our last meeting was last week, September eighteenth, and I think everyone was present, actually, it's a, it's a large committee. There, we're making a lot of headway in terms of doing assessments and, and approaching this issue from every angle possible, trying to figure out the, the best solution. At present, it appears that moving forward with a better defined plan of what we had previously considered before the town is, is probably the direction that we'll be heading in. I anticipate that there will be tremendous communication efforts going forward. The most important aspect to come out of the meeting, and Mr. Mayo, you can add as well, most important aspect was to make sure that the public, the community was fully informed of the facts, and so you were able to understand what the issues are with visuals, with virtual tours, with possible in-person tours and the like, so you can understand what, where the issues are and how they can best be resolved. I think some of the information, when we last considered this issue, wasn't perhaps laid out as thoroughly as, as it could have been. For example, we are a department of about forty-seven, forty, forty-eight, I think budget forty-eight right now, the Public Safety Building, as it would be reconfigured, would be able to accommodate sixty officers. We're not expecting, you know, the, the department to grow by, by that capacity, but it just is indicative of the opportunities for space, you know, if, if we have it designed, you know, properly. One of the biggest concerns is time is not our friend, as, as you heard earlier, you know, a lot of construction going on, every, every six months that, that any sort of work gets delayed, we're looking at additional costs, and so we're looking at just over an eight million dollar project that potentially could be closer to nine point six million dollars. And so we need to make sure that we're very thoughtful going forward in terms of our timeline and also working with the architects. And again, these are, these are preliminary numbers, so I don't want to say that this is set in stone, but, and all of it ultimately is based upon the bidding process, but I do want to get that out there now. It's expected that this, this building project would come before town meeting in the spring, so it would not be a fall item, but it would be a spring item. I do want to put on everyone's radar, over the next several months, we have a, a subcommittee that's formed a communications subcommittee, just to make sure that everyone's educated on, on all the issues that are there, and there are a lot of issues, and they go, they run pretty deep. And also, dispelling some of the misconceptions, the police side of that building was not entirely redone back fourteen, fifteen years ago. A small amount of the, the money allocated for that building actually went to the police side, most of it was on the fire side to basically rebuild a fire station. Those are the sorts of things that we have to work through, but we had great public engagement. Some folks that were opposed to the project came to the meeting and, and had, you know, a very, had very good questions that, that we, that we answered as, as a committee. We have a great composition of, of committee members that, you know, that include the social services side of things, residents at large. It's, it's, it's a really oppressive group that has thought very hard, and we have, we have approached it from the financial side of things, from the, the need side of things, and I'm happy to report that we're going forward with a project that I think is probably the best, the best solution for really pressing problems that are long overdue to be addressed. So, stay tuned for that and more to come on that. The next meeting will be in December, but there will be a series of, of communicate, of information pushouts, I expect, over the course of the fall, working with Jen McDonald, so that the, the public can make a, an informed decision, one way or the other, relative to this project. Next, Envision Wakefield, I wanted to give an update on that as well. I spoke recently with VHB, the design engineering firm that we've been working with on that. Where we stand currently with that project, the, we have a meeting that's scheduled with Mass Department of Transportation, that'll be in early December, and that meeting will, is where VHB will, will be present and will be presenting preliminary, and I say preliminary design. So at this point, we're really talking about taking the concepts that we've been discussing and, and, and VHB testing them for feasibility. So basically going curb to curb and having a rough plan put out, and then working through to see if the details are feasible, you know, if we have to move a crosswalk, for example, potentially, if we have to, you know, shift this or that. I should also point out that the bike lane aspect of this project, this is a really significant project, and we have, the state is, is a major, is a significant funding partner in this, and the bike lane issue that some people have raised continues to be considered by VHB and everyone working on this project. There are a few options that we're still exploring, we're exploring, you know, the feasibility of, of potentially shifting the bike lane onto crescent, if that is an option that would connect to the rail trail. We don't know whether that's feasible, it would likely require an exception from Mass DOT, which they may or may not approve. We may find as a community that we would want that or not want that. But I do want to caution folks that even without a bike lane, the sta, the safety standards that are in place for the downtown area, especially Middle Maine, are such that we would not be able to have the small sections of parallel park, of, of angled parking remain in place without shrinking the sidewalks considerably. And that's just a function of, you know, design has changed, expectations have changed with respect to Department of Transportation, so we're considering all of that. You know, VHB, they're experts in this, you know, they, they're nationwide, they, they do this all the time, and, and they know where our, our needs are, they know our priorities. I know that some people are very excited about the bike lanes, others are less enthusiastic about them. Ultimately, though, we're planning to do everything that we can to make sure we maximize the parking, and, and then everything will, will fall into place from there, but this continues to be a design that is a work in progress. In speaking with VHB, after they meet with Department of Transportation and talk through some of the kind of preliminary, you know, thoughts that we've had as a community, we'll come back and have more community forums, probably, I would say, in January and into February of twenty twenty. That will not affect the timeline that, that we've talked about all the way through, relative to the project, but I do think it's important that, that we continue to have this, this community engagement, so this, there is not a, a final design plan that is going before Mass Department of Transportation, but we need to show them that we are at least at a point where we've considered the feasibility of what we're proposing to them. And again, it's, it's, it's a major undertaking, so I know that there will be elements that not everyone's going to love, but overall, it's going to be, I, I think, a tremendous value add for our community with, you know, primarily sourced back to, to, to state and federal funds. And on that, too, the issue, the issue of parking, which is a part of this, we have spoken a lot with Chief Scory on this, we've had tremendous success with, with the parking, the regular parking enforcement, and we are seeing spots opening up, especially during peak hours that we didn't see previously. We're, we are gathering data on that, I'll probably expect a report, I think, at Steve at the next meeting, to give a bit of a snapshot of where that stands, but we've had general compliance, there are some, you know, shifts in, in, in attitude towards it, and, and some people are resistant to it, but by, but mind you, parking enforcement is not new. Regular parking enforcement is what's occurring now, and what used to be one-hour parking is now two-hour parking downtown, that's significant. The biggest issue that we're running into is businesses that want to continue to park in front of their, their location, and that's not good business for them, and, you know, we're working through, working with DPW to determine other loca, and Mr. Mayo, determine other locations that we can propose to Traffic Advisory Committee for some additional merchant spots, we're mindful of that, but by, by nearly every account, the parking enforcement has been very successful thus far, and so that's, that's a good thing. And finally, at our last meeting, we talked about the downtown bench placement, I have a meeting with Lieutenant, with Chief Scory and Director Conway, I think in about a week and a half before our next town council meeting, where we'll, I'll sit down with them and talk about what seemed to be the consensus and what their recommendation is in terms of how we can reposition benches in the downtown as to preserve them and preserve their availability, but not create the same kind of congregating spots that we have currently. Some of that would depend on where utilities are, and, and so that's where DPW comes into play, and some of it will, will depend on what the police are recommending. And again, these are, these are bolted into the ground, and so we can try different locations, see what works, what doesn't, and move anything that doesn't work. So, with that, I'll move on, unless there's any questions. Councilor Chines?
Thank you, just a quick question, and thank you for the update. You know, with regard to the, the downtown revitalization and this sort of preliminary, effectively sort of test plan that goes to Mass DOT in December, is there going to be any public meeting to review that and have people have a chance to, again, sort of give some feedback and see how it all comes together? I know we've, we've talked through all the concepts in the prior meetings, but I, I think, you know, until you see the concepts come together, it's hard for folks to visualize that.
Right. Well, I would say that the, the, the concepts that had been presented at, at the most recent public meeting and what are online currently are the concepts that they're running through with feasibility, there will be considerable modifications to those concepts nonetheless. VHB thought it would, it would be premature to have another public meeting because we had worked our way through the public meetings to these preliminary concepts, so it made more sense to- to go through DOT, get their feedback, then come back to the public and say, okay, this is where we're at relative to, this is what Mass DOT is saying, because they needed at least, I don't want to say a concrete plan, but a plan set in more than sand, but less than concrete at this point. So, I asked the question specifically, I said, does it make sense? And they thought that there wouldn't have, there wouldn't be a value add to do that because we're at a point now where they need to work through feasibility of all the concept, suggestions that have come in, and they're still working through, you know, all the, the suggestions that people have had. But they thought that it was better timed after the Mass DOT meeting, because that's only the first of multiple meetings.
I would probably respectfully disagree with VHB on that one. I understand the point, I just, again, I think there's, there's a certain amount of sort of anchoring that happens once you put something in front of Mass DOT, even if it's only in concept. You know, I would personally, just, you know, speaking for myself alone, encourage us to have another public meeting before then, understanding that there's still a long process that happens afterwards.
I would disagree, because the last meeting I was at, that Ed was at, and I don't know that anyone else, Paul might have been there, was the meeting where they showed, like, whatever it was, C, what's the option, one of them. I feel like that's the one where they took everyone's comments, they got more comments, and they said, this is the plan in a very loose way that seems to be the plan that most public, most folks are in agreement with. So, I think having another one, I just, I'm not sure what that, at this stage, I don't know what that would add, because the last two I went to had a lot of people from the public and seemed to do exactly what you're talking about. So, if they present to DOT, again, work in progress, it's not going to, that's not going to be the...
I mean, this isn't, this isn't even twenty-five percent of design.
Right. So, we'll come back for another public meeting in January, February.
They're concerned, I mean, and they do, they're the experts, so I defer to them, and their concern was that if we were to come back, in essence, with where we are currently, it wouldn't be different than where we were at the last meeting. It was, what they're, what they're doing is, it becomes more technical with Mass DOT, and so they have to, so they're going through and they're, as they described it, they're testing feasibility of the concepts. So, if certain things would work, they would, you know, make sure that that's there. If certain things would not work, they would identify those earlier on. But they felt as if the public would feel more engaged after they ran through Mass DOT, because they'd have more responses for the public. So, for example, the bike lanes, which were one of the bigger issues, they'll have a better sense from Mass DOT about where that is. Can we apply for an exemption? You know, what's the basis for it? If Mass DOT has other comments about certain things, certainly. They are looking currently at Water Street and Albion Street. Those two are rather straightforward designs, because they're very limited in scope. So, I do expect that with Mass DOT, they would be further along in a more feasible design for those two, to run by Mass DOT, again, to get at least preliminary feedback. But it's still very early on in terms of the Mass DOT involvement, and there's going to be a lot of that. But they were pretty, they were adamant that they thought it was better to clear that through Mass DOT first, because then they could answer questions and have a more robust discussion with, with residents.
Yeah, I think, I'm just mindful of, I don't doubt VHB's sort of expertise on the process and obviously the design. We hired them for a reason, but just hearing the, you know, the comments, the feedback, the questions that I'm getting, while I recognize we've had a series of meetings where we've collected all of this information, I think a lot of those questions are still out there. And so, given that it has been, you know, at least a few months since the last time we had a public meeting, I think it would behoove us to, you know, to do that again, give people an update as to where the process is, how it works, and give people another chance to submit some ideas.
I think that's the issue, though. I mean, it's more than just the feedback. Literally, each of the design meetings kind of advance the design forward, reflecting the comments of people up to that point. And so, at this point, they're, they're still working with what was presented at the last meeting. Like, they're not changing that. And so, if people had questions, well, can we put the bike lanes on Crescent, for example, they, we don't know that answer yet. We won't know that until after Mass DOT. I would say that having been with this process all the way through, the concerns have, that have been raised, have been generally consistent all the way through. There haven't been new concerns raised by and large, and Mass, VHB felt like they would have, residents would have more of a value add to the whole process after they at least had a prelim run through.
And I'm not disputing the fact that we should be doing that after the prelim run through as well.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, again, I, you know, made my point, and it's my opinion alone, but I do think there's value in it.
Certainly. Counselor with Calvin.
Just, I mean, maybe there's a middle ground there, and personally, I think you can never communicate too much, so, so I'm not against having another meeting, but at the very least, I think we should keep our website updated that says, this is what went to DOT. I think that, I just really think that we have built a good product there, and that we should kind of be very clear on what the process is and what we're submitting to DOT and what are the questions we're asking, and, and then I think we'll have a more informed session, whenever we do have it, sooner rather than later.
And they'll still accept comments. I mean, they were very open to say, folks can send in comments and concerns on the website.
Right, and I think we should be very clear, so we should not, I don't think anybody's suggesting that we just stop communicating.
Absolutely not. I just think it would be duplicative.
And one of the first questions I had for VHB in my second-to-last call with him is, when should we, in the fall, have our next, our next public meeting? I specifically asked that. That was my question with the expectation, they would say, oh, we should have it, you know, in October, November. And they thought it through internally, and they said, you know, it's not going to make sense at this point. It makes more sense for us to be able to come back with more information for the community, because then we can answer questions and we're better positioned, because otherwise, we're speculating the same way that we were speculating at the last meeting.
So, so just to follow up on my constituent, so one of the questions I'm getting is, when does this come to town meeting? I mean, is because there'll be funding that we'll have to approve for it, or?
Do we have any more funding to approve for this? We may not have much.
It depends on some grants, too. There's some active grant pursuits as well.
So, really, it depends on where the funding comes from, as to whether it comes to town meeting.
Exactly.
For the funding portion.
For the funding portion.
Right, and then I guess it's our decision whether it comes to town meeting for a, for a design, which is tough. I'm not, I'm not advocating that. Just, if there's funding, obviously, that's where it comes.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none. Next item is item number fourteen, licenses. We have a one-day liquor license from Lisa Flaschenberg. She is seeking a one-day liquor license for a private event fundraiser at the Wakefield Masonic Building on October twenty-sixth. Her application is in the packets.
Move that we accept the license, put forth by Lisa Flaschenberg.
I move by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Dinaco. Any discussion? Seeing none, the motion before you is the approval of the one-day liquor license for the private event fundraiser at the Wakefield Masonic Building on October twenty-sixth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing a vote of six to zero, the motion carries unanimously. Item number fifteen is gift acceptance from the BB Library.
Move to accept the gifts. Donated to BB Library is laid out in the packet.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Chines, seconded by Vice Chair Santos. Any discussion? One point I wanted to add is, is it helpful for us to have these at every meeting, or do you think we're better batching these, to have them every few meetings?
I think they need it.
Is there?
Yeah, they need it.
Well, under Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A, we can't spend the money until the Town Council accepts it.
So, we should pretty much do this every meeting then?
Yeah.
All right, so, all those in favor of accepting the gifts as identified in the packets? I've seen, all right, six to zero, the motion carries unanimously.
I guess there's worse things to vote on every meeting than accept us of a gift, right?
And it's quick. It's quicker than some of the others.
Item number sixteen is warrants. Counselor Chines, if you could provide an update on warrant five through warrant eight.
Sure. So, on September sixth, which was actually prior to our last meeting, but not prior enough to actually get it in the agenda for our meeting by the lake, I did sign off on four warrants, warrants five, six, seven, and eight. Total dollars of twelve point three million dollars. You can see the purposes laid out in the packet. Roughly about half of that is related to the town's retirement obligations. Again, details are in the packet, but happy to answer any questions if folks have them.
Any questions for Counselor Chines? That does not require a vote, but I would just remind everyone that on the website, under the Town Council, under Agenda Meeting packets, this is actually the last page of the packet, is the warrant items breakdown. Thank you for preparing that. Item number seventeen, matters unanticipated for the agenda. These are only items that would have come up in the last forty-eight hours, so let's not be able to provide the proper notice. Are there any? All right, seeing none. Item number eighteen, announcements and acknowledgements, it's the opportunity for Town Councilors, Town Administrator, Clerk, and Town Council to provide recognition or announcements. Does anyone have any? Counselor Chines?
Sure, just a couple of things. First of all, just wanted to make folks aware that Mystic Valley Elder Services, which does provide services in a number of communities, including Wakefield, to seniors, helping them stay in their homes. They're having a fundraiser on October seventeenth, which is unfortunately the date of our tri-board meeting, so we certainly can't attend, but I would encourage the folks watching at home to consider doing so. Fundraiser's going to be at the porch, our old friends formerly on Tuttle Street, now in Medford at River's Edge. Again, great cause, supports a lot of seniors in Wakefield, so wish them luck, and certainly you'll be happy to contribute to that, even if we can't attend. Did want to congratulate the Wakefield High School Marching Band. The competition season for marching bands started last Saturday in Medford. They won awards both for music, percussion, and color guards, so really a great example, I think, of the commitment our schools have to the arts and some of the great work that they do there. Finally, just wanted to mention a, a non-Wakefield town issue, but Linfield is having a special town meeting on Thursday, the twenty-sixth, to discuss funding for the design portion of the Wakefield-Linfield rail trail, and certainly, I think, for those of us here and those of us watching, if you do have friends, family, who live in Linfield, encourage them to participate in that, and certainly hope that helps us move this project forward. That's gotten a lot of great support here in Wakefield.
Anyone else? Counselor Butt?
Sure, just two, two things to talk about, in addition, three things, actually, so just a reminder about the Wave Five K on October fifth. It's a really great event. Please come if you can. I just want to echo what people said here, but the caliber of library trustees was unbelievable. And I think back to when I started, I mean, these resumes and cover letters are amazing. We are, we are really fortunate with the number of volunteers and the caliber of volunteers we have in this town, so I thank everyone who is making our town better. And just, one example of that, on Friday night, I was driving through town from Greenwood to the north, and, and every place was packed. Tequilas and fangs and tonos, and it was really, you know, people were eating outside. It just was, it was a good vibe in our town, and I, it was noticeable that people were out and about and enjoying themselves in Wakefield, so I just wanted to share that story.
Anyone else? Counselor Smith, with Calvin.
Just a couple of things. This Saturday, the twenty-eighth, there is a event being organized by the Unitarian Universalist Church and Sustainable Wakefield called Wakefield Organizing, Climate Organizing One-O-One. So, it's kind of a grassroots, there's been a lot of talk about climate in the news with the climate strike and the UN meetings, and this is just a way to kind of take what can be an overwhelming issue and bring it down to the local level and see what can be done here at home. So, you can, it's all free, and registration is at massclimateaction.org, and then later you can do all the historical things, so you can get everything in on Saturday. And then I think the flu clinic is happening at the Farmers Market on Saturday, which is a really great opportunity to get flu shots. And then just a third thing, maybe for a future meeting, we have the Wakefield Assistance Fund, and I know we're going into holiday season here, and I guess I was just wondering, maybe we could get an update on that and where we are in funding and, and what the, a report on how it's been used.
Certainly. Anyone else? Mr. Mullen?
Mr. Chairman, as long as I've been Town Council, whenever a town vendor goes bankrupt, I file a proof of claim, and there's almost never any money available for unsecured creditors. So, with zero hope, I filed a proof of claim with the Hiltz Waste Disposal Bankruptcy. And to my amazement, in this month, we received a check for a hundred and sixty-seven thousand six hundred thirteen dollars from the bankruptcy court. Yes.
Fantastic.
Oh, my God.
So, nowhere nearly the amount I claimed, but if I were accused of exaggeration in my claim, I'd take the fifth.
Thank you for that, great news.
Tom did a great job on this. I mean, we were hit with a situation where Hiltz was going out, we had very little notice. We were able to scramble, and no one missed trash pickup, which didn't happen in other communities. And we also, Tom also filed that claim, and he said at the time, we're never going to get any money on this, but not bad. So, great job by our Town Council on that one.
It was great work by DPW, too, around that time, certainly, to make sure that was seamless. Anyone else? All right, so, just a couple of things, just a reminder that three hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary, celebrations this weekend, great opportunities to experience a lot of really, really cool things. We're getting into fall, so the Hunt Street Yard Waste Facility, also known as the Pit, open every Saturday, every Wednesday, and every second and fourth Sunday, just a reminder on that. And also, just to echo the sentiments here about Waves Five K around, around the lake, that do some really impactful work right in our community, and that's coming up on October fifth. So, with that, our next regular Town Council meeting will be October seventh, twenty nineteen, at seven PM, right here, and we'll have a strategic retreat on October second at six PM for the council at the Americow. I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
It's not moved.
Move out my Vice Chair, seconded by Counselor Dinaco. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Wakefield, and good night.